I'll this meeting to order. Let's stand this way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to welcome Jonathan to our board. He was a past student of mine. And Brandis excused, everyone here is here on administrative sides. This meeting was submitted to the Green Bay Prescott Center on Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. The meeting notice was distributed on Thursday, April 24th, 2025, for posting to the Bank of Luxembourg Home Office, Luxembourg Post Office, and Casco Post Office. Our district's mission statement, we inspire minds, challenge students, and promote excellence. We are Spartans. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. Prior to making a public comment, individuals must announce their name, address, and group affiliation. Each speaker's comments are limited to three minutes. All statements are to be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually. Speakers should not expect an immediate response or reaction to their comments. Do we have any speakers? I don't know.
Good evening, how's everyone doing? Hi, I'm Katie Louie, JIP Chair at the High School. This year I am the graduation coordinator, so it's my first year doing that. I believe at the last board meeting, you know, Principal Bahatch was not here, but I think, Dr. Fairwings, were you able to read in possibly the email that I sent to Principal?
Yes.
And so I just wanted to come and kind of reiterate my thoughts about possibly changing graduation date. Not for this year, a little too close, but possibly for next year and in future years. As a parent and as an employee here, this was made about ten-ish years ago. Mr. Kirk made the move. Yes, Mr. Kirk made the move. His first year he did not like graduations over Memorial Day weekend because he always had family plans. That was the reason we were told that they moved it. So I think that probably was not a great reason to move it. There are many, many reasons, as I had stated in the email, to move it. Availability of the gym, ease of getting speakers, ease for parents and family members to come. Sports, because there's oftentimes sports on that day, so we're trying to bend around it. So I had sent Principal Bahatch a survey that I was hoping to send out to parents of the graduating class of 2026 to gather their inputs, to see if they would like the date moved off of a Wednesday. I gave several suggestions, if they yes or no, do you want it moved off of Wednesday? Do you want it stayed or not? If so, would you like it to move to a Friday night, a Saturday, a Thursday? So I'm trying to give some options. I think just getting some feedback is the right place to start. So anyways, I just wanted to reiterate that tonight. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Next meeting dates, subject to change are May 20th, 2025, June 18th, 2025, and July 16th, 2025. All beginning at 7:00 PM, right here in the multitrupus room. Any opening comments?
I'd like to congratulate the two FFA teams that competed at state competition last week. So there was a wildlife team and there was a dairy evaluation team. So prior to that, the FFA had five teams that competed at regional competition. So kudos to them that they competed at state, that was a good experience for them. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is that it's Missoula Week for our young theater kiddos. So students in grades K, I'm sorry, first through six are doing Hercules and they have public performances this coming weekend on Saturday at 11:00 AM and 4:00. And thank you to Joellen for housing our directors this year. So I hope you have a great week and a good experience.
Yeah, they came in yesterday and you just kind of showed them around and Erica came in and brought over dinner and so we just sat and talked and they're really nice. So yeah, I think because they're really going to enjoy working with them.
They were looking forward to a house stay with the dog, so yay.
Yeah, my dog is very happy when it's with people, you know, because nobody comes to see me, they only come to see the dog.
So I'd like to thank the following businesses and I'll get to why we're going to thank them. DNS Machine, Olson Fabrication, De Kaiser Construction, Green Bay Packaging, Connell Caws, Laser Form, Tweet Garrett, Lemons Water Care, Distinctive Cabinets, Cabinet Creation and Design, and Dorsh Ford, and then NEW Plastics as well. So amongst those businesses, we fundraised over eighty-three thousand dollars. We also wrote a grant that to match that, which we are not allowed to publicize at this time, but I would like you to know that there's a very good indication that we received that. So we should end up with about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars to upgrade tech ed equipment in the near future. So we're working on the paperwork and press releases and all that good stuff, but it's not public knowledge yet, so.
Sounds great.
So anyway, I always like you guys to have the information before, you know, stuff goes out there, so.
Okay.
CSA Board of Control, meeting coming on up our district and been holding a seat on the board for many years before I was on the board even. Luxembourg Casco District is one of those up for renewal. I would think that we will be able to retain the seat. The district holds the seat, not necessarily a specific board member. We'll find out after the reorganization meeting coming up there and maybe whether we retain the seat or not. Whether we do or do not, we still as a district, a member of the board. And they also hired a new district administrator, superintendent or whatever. For the head of CSA, Aaron's been with them for many years, I've known him for many years. And Colleen is stepping on now retiring. I wish her will retire.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Next part is the reorganization of the school board, the election of officers. I'll turn that over to you. Do we have any nominations for the office of president?
Nominate Linda.
I'll second. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay. For Linda, for president, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Opposed. Well, everybody's talking. There you go, you are now president. Thank you. Next one is vice president.
I nominate Alex Melissava.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Do I have a? Motion's been made and seconded for Alex to be vice president, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Clerk?
I'm making nomination Jenny Solentin.
I'll second it.
You guys are going too fast, can't wait here for it. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, a motion's been made and seconded for Jenny Solentin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Treasure?
I nominate you, Colleen.
Do I hear a second? I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded for Dave to be treasure. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Do I hear a vote done for Dave? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seepa?
Let me do the second.
Yeah. Nomination for CSA seven representative, I nominate Dave.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded for Dave. Are there any other nominations?
Better remember what to say.
Are there any other nominations? Motion's been made and seconded for Dave to be the CSA seven representative, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. WASB delegate?
I nominate Linda.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to have Linda be the WASB delegate. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Motion's been made and seconded for Linda to be the WASB delegate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. WASB alternate?
I nominate Jenny Solentin.
Oh, make a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, okay. We'll put Dave there. Okay, motion's been made and seconded for Jenny to be the WASB alternate. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Motion's been made and seconded for the WASB alternate to be Jenny Solentin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next nomination is the WASB correspondent.
I nominate Linda.
I was just going to say, which I really don't know. Most of that stuff we all get. So. Okay, so Jenny made a motion that I would be the correspondent. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded that Linda be the WASB correspondent. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Motion's been made and seconded that Linda be the WASB correspondent, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Committee assignments, I will hand those out at the end of the meeting today. Consent agenda. First. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes, unless the board member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda for the separate action. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Administrative reports.
Okay, I'll go first this time.
I think you go first everything.
Of course. We just wrapped up our final Eames Assessment for this school year. That's the new state assessment that's required. And we're working on getting those plans and results out to parents later this week. Last Friday, we had our first and second grade concert, which was very well attended. Another packed house, standing room only. But very well done, kids did a great job and Amy always has them doing some fun stuff, so it was pretty cute. They had everybody doing the chicken dance. The whole gym, so it was fun. And we're just basically, it's kind of gearing up for the final stretch of school here. We have some field trips coming up for different grade levels. Jenny mentioned that we have Missoula this week. The school will see the performance of that on, our school will be on Friday afternoon at 1:30 and Heather's is in the morning.
Nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen, so. Other than that, we're just kind of, it's going to be a mad rush to the end, but there's a lot to do and not a lot of time to do it, so.
It's like all of a sudden it's May.
Yeah. And it goes faster every year, it seems like.
And I had to start with a little funny and you might not think it's funny, but I almost burst out laughing as you're all saying aye. When I worked at Denmark, I was sitting in the crowd of a board meeting and someone I was sitting next to impulsively said nay when the whole room was silent after everyone said aye because she couldn't help herself, like it just came out. So that's all I could think about as you're all saying aye and I was trying to keep my mouth shut so that didn't come out of my mouth because I was worried it was going to, so. Besides that thought. Forward testing wrapped up for us last week. Probably one of our most efficient forward testing windows that we've had. Ms. Cos, who really oversees and manages all the makeups for us, was out quite a bit. So Ms. Garso and I really tag teamed trying to get makeups in as quickly and efficiently as possible. So we only ended up having, I would say like eight students to have to makeup test on that Monday following our actual window, which is by far the smallest group we've had in a while, so that was great. Definitely glad to be done with that just because it does take up about two, two and a half weeks of our time from regular instruction, just trying to manage through those tests. Otherwise, really a lot of what Pete said, so students are, as of today, trying out for Missoula and then we'll be preparing for the rest of this week. May 8th, we have our spring concerts, 9:00 AM is our fifth and sixth grade, and then 1:45 PM is our third and fourth grade. We're also preparing for field trips and end of the year festivities and then otherwise on my end is really preparing for summer tasks because, again, we're nineteen days away as of the end of school today. So it's going to come fast.
For the middle school, I'll echo some of what was referenced as far as forward exam, as far as, you know, my goodness, it's going to be May and the preparedness for next year. Some specifics, however, a couple of weeks back, we had our first middle school musical and, well, it's the first since I've been here, so I think it was ten or twelve years. You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown, the kids did great, everybody did a really great job with that. And this year it coincided with a fine arts experience between high school and middle school. So the art that was displayed and the other things that go with that, that was really well done. I think Joellen has previously mentioned a couple of times, tomorrow's a career day. So we're prepared to have all of the middle school students enjoy that opportunity. We're going to have our second and final dance for the middle school kids Friday evening. Well, it's not evening, it's after school until about dinnertime, until 05:00. Spring sports have started since we've last been here. In fact, I came from the track meet tonight. Some wind hated times and wind deficient times for them, so. They did a nice job, but thankfully, the weather held up for now. And our spring concert is Tuesday, May 6th. Before you know it'll be the last day of school.
It's been assessment time at the high school as well, seems like that's what spring is for all the schools. We got ACT all done and buttoned up, pre-ACT for our ninth and 10th graders and then all of our 10th graders, forward testing for social studies as well. Lot of testing done in the classrooms and glad to be done with it, that's for sure. Next Monday night, we've got our academic award ceremony coming up. We've got ninety-three students, oh, I think it was a hundred and five students receiving awards for the academic award ceremony, so that'll be a nice night. And then another thing coming up on the horizon here, actually, next Thursday and Friday is a variety show. Tickets go on sale tomorrow, the variety show, so get your tickets for that event.
Yes, we're on the swing on spring sports, obviously, believe it or not, we're actually only about two weeks away from the tournament starting, softball starts in a few weeks. We have the WIA annual meeting on Friday and all the amendments pass except for there was an amendment for a petition for having cross-country, not being part of the balance that we have. So I'm just going to figure out the best way to get communication out about the NIL to our families. I'll probably offer it in person meeting just so I can navigate through that. I think they're going to put some stuff together for us to use and then I'm meeting Wednesday with my coaches just to go over the new summer contact.
With that passing, Jenny, there hasn't been like any thoughts of year-round regular practice? Now that there's not going to be like a limit on summer contact days. I mean, I understand like summer contact days or contact days would be different than saying, hey, we're going to have, you know, basketball practice every Tuesday and Thursday, like all summer long.
So I'm not sure what you're asking. So what's the?
So like are, with this passing of this, is that pretty much going to allow like coaches to decide, hey, we want to have year-round practice versus?
It's only just summer.
Okay.
It's only summer. So the rule is now school contact, or still non-school contact, that's a whole other, I have a whole other thought on that. School contact can run from June 1st to June 30th and then July 7th. They want a deadline there. So that's only in the summer. And I'm going to have a discussion with, I quite honestly, I don't think much is going to change for them. If a coach comes and says, I want the gym Friday as a week for that whole time, I'm going to have a discussion with them because that's not what's best for our kids. So that's a discussion I'm going to have with a coach, if that's what I'm expecting. And Football Coaches Association is going to put some guidance together because they actually don't, most of the coaches don't want to be in pads during that time, so the medical advisory board is going to help with that as well. So there's some things to navigate, so. It just gets rid of the gray area of, well, the Booster Club can get the gym and hire our coaches and all along. Just clean that up a little bit. So I don't actually foresee much changing for our teams, to be honest with you. Based on the conversations I have with my coaches, so. Just the naming of what we call, we don't have to call them open gym anymore. Or non-school contact, they need to call them contact days for that period of time. But this opens nothing up during the school year. They cannot have contact with them outside of their school, their school season, during the school year. And the reason for the June 1 and July 51st is a school like us, we're out on May 21st. Well, some schools aren't out until June 10th, so the rule used to be first of summer for your school. We get three weeks on people then, so that's why they need one year the same start and end date.
Yeah, I think that hit like a lot of like these sports media things. I mean, as soon as that vote was done, it was a lot of YouTube videos and one that going, can you believe this? And I was, you know, you watch a couple of them and you're like, well, I don't think that's really the intent of that. And then I think people get the wrong impression, so.
Well, and just so you guys know, like, a lot of people blame the WIA. We're the WIA, like, we make the vote. It's not the WIA. They put the amendments out in the schools' ballpark, so it's not Stephanie Holler's rules. So if anyone ever asks you, you can clear that up, it's not their rule. They're the ones that have to enforce the rules, which people don't like, right? So if you ever hear anyone talking about that, that's not the case. This is what was put in front of the membership and that's what we voted on. So talk to your, your school, if you have a problem, right?
I can jump in. Forward thinking the next year quite a bit. We've got some open special education positions right now, not a lot of candidates out there. It is a problem statewide. I'm headed to WCAST the latter part of this week and I'm looking forward to having some conversations with other directors and just trying to look for some creative ideas around staffing and how to help support that and attract people. And then once we do hire people, that support piece. So I did already slate, CSA seven runs an induction program for new special ed teachers. Allowed up to three spots, so I have three spots reserved. And then as we get our new hires, I'll kind of figure out who the best fit is for that program. But that is really all around the state's initiative around trying to improve retention for special education teachers. So that's very much been on my mind. Open enrollment window is closing the end of this month, so I will be working on reviewing applications and kind of helping with that process. And just a lot of IP meetings and working with teams on schedules for next year and case management and all of that stuff. Kind of the highlights.
All those end of year reports.
Yeah, there's a lot going on.
So DePere, Calthez, myself, and then Kathy Van Pei and Nick, I can't think what his last name is. Joseph are working on a grant for twenty-five grand, which will be split somehow between Luxembourg Casco and the Pierce School District for our mentor mentee program. So that's due May 1st, so I told Joellen, are you going to be around? She said, no, I got to go milk cows, so. She said, I'll be here in the morning or at the end of the day, so we're going to get that squared away. We just need a bunch of signatures and stuff, so we finished writing that today. And then over the next, tomorrow, Mike Trumberger and I are doing a virtual presentation for CSA two. They have a big career readiness conference. We get to highlight some of the things that both of our districts have done really well. And then we have, at the end of the day, we have a question and answer session where we're able to support other districts and where do they want to go and how do you get there and some of those other things. And we get to participate in the conference for three, we got three free vouchers. So our two counselors and Jo Lynn is going to participate in that, so. That's it.
All right, business insurance, RFPs had gone out already now, so they're due May 30th. So you guys will be voting in June on those. Fuel bids went out today and due date will be the fourteenth, so we'll vote on that at the May board meeting. And then I did reach out about the heat exchanger, still no update from the manufacturer. He said, again, he's being told they're going to take their time. So he said it could be a while before we hear anything. And then just some good news, Deb Paco in the food service, when she first started here, her mission was to always reach 1,200 meals and she reached it last week at 12:21. So very excited for her because she is very pumped up about it. I mean, there's days where it was 11:50 or 11:90 and she's like, I'm almost there. So that was really exciting last week. That's it.
So earlier this year, the Department of Education sent out a Dear Colleague Letter, which said that public schools will lose their federal funding if they don't eliminate DEI policies and practices. And one of the things that they sent to all the states was a affidavit, an assurance that we would have to sign saying that we don't discriminate and we don't have discriminatory DEI practices. And it's odd, and it was in the paper a lot because of the state stance. Wisconsin is one of the fourteen states that did not sign and did not submit the paperwork that the federal government was asking for. And their stance was that we already do that. And in Wisconsin, in our assurances that we do with our federal funding every year anyway, it does have a section. And I went and I looked it up and actually, it does. Like one of the very first paragraphs, it says that the applicant shall comply with all applicable statutory regulatory requirements. These requirements are included but are not limited to Title IX of the Civil Rights Act. And so, you know, so it already says that we're going to be following that law. So that's why the state was kind of like, well, why are we filling out this other affidavit of this, or this assurance that's three pages long when here we have it in less than a paragraph? So there were some legal considerations and so they asked for clarification and the federal government did not come back with any clarification. So DPI is like, well, you know, we- So DPI is like, well, you know, we submit these assurances every year, it already says it in there, that, so their lawyers are feeling that we're all covered that way. The deadline was on April 24th to have this letter submitted. On the 24th, it came back with some different legal opinions that if districts wanted to, they could send their own letter to the federal government, saying that, you know, we do follow those guidelines. And so, I did do that, on behalf of the district. The letter just, we're getting really simple, and it just says, Luxembourg Casco School District, as we're submitting to federal funding, previously provided assurance to comply with the Title IX to the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, and such assurances were provided to the federal government. The Luxembourg Casco School District did not receive the additional request for assurances, but was advised by the Department of Public Instruction that the US Department of Ed requested the additional assurances by April 24th, 2025. Because that, the request actually went to the state level, not to the district level. Luxembourg Casco School District assures that will comply with Title IX, the Supreme Court decision, Students for Fair Admissions versus Harvard and the law. The Luxembourg Casco School District reserves all rights and defenses of part of the district, its officers, officials, employees, and agents. So that's just basically what we sent to the federal government, so that in case there's gonna be a hole up with federal funds at the state level, we have something to fall back on that says, well, we sent you another assurance. So why are you holding up our funds? So it's just a backup on that. So, but then, on Thursday later in the day, because the drama never ends, a federal judge blocked administrative directive that threatened to cut the federal funding for public schools with DEI programs. And then, I just read today that the Attorney General is also filing a separate lawsuit on behalf of, I think, the 14 states to injunction them from taking away our federal funds. So yes, the drama continues, it is, you know, every day, it's another piece, so, keeping an eye on all that.
Just a side note also, that I do have my phone on in case emergency management sends out a warning, because I need to know what, for our towns. So hopefully, that was nothing, you're okay. School lays on quarterly report, Officer Neil.
Hello, everyone. So I'm two quarters behind, because second quarter, I was under the weather. So when one thing drops, another one rises. As you can see, the drugs, alcohol has back over from, I don't remember what my number was for, or Dana and I's number was for first quarter, but obviously, it was very high. Just because of the sensors, I think the kids are starting to learn now, not all, but most. So that number has dropped, but however, with this time of the year, truance is going up, but I do have to commend the building principals for doing a good job on keeping up on scheduling those 15-day meetings, so we can get ahead of it before we have to do referrals or citations. So they've been very helpful with that. Other than that, that's really all I have. Any questions? Welcome, John.
Any particular insight into why the second quarter did the third quarter, the increase was over on increased incidences by the third quarter compared to the second?
Which, which, are you talking about a specific category, or just a...
Well, the biggest categories are the teacher and student assist, but the total, second quarter was 654, and by the time of the third, 768, you know, just...
Yeah, I think, I think it just depends on, depends on the day, it depends on the quarter. I mean, that's really all it comes down to. I mean, there's days like Friday, where I wasn't, you know, sitting for more than 10 minutes without a building coming to me, or whatever, and then there's days where I just kind of, you know, work on attendance, or whatever it may be, maybe catching up on things, but yeah, it's just all dependent on the kids, the staff, citizens, which...
No particular one type of thing that increased that?
No, just attendance, attendance has been one of the biggest things, and for the high school, I handle all the attendance, so I run the reports and everything like that, send out five and 10-day letters, things like that, and obviously, it's been a busy time of the year, because their attendances, or their absences, excuse me, are all adding up, so, takes a lot of time. Any other questions?
Thanks, Mia.
Thanks, guys.
Discuss and approve the 25-26 school meal price.
I thought your desk was just gonna approve it.
We wanna hear from you, Deb.
Yes.
So what we are looking at is a 10 cent increase in our meal pricing, which would bring K6 meals to $2.85, and our 712 meals would go with 310. The other thing that we are looking at is that family milk. Our milk prices are going up, and if the trend continues, mid-year, next year, we might be eating like 41 or 42 cents, so we just wanna get ahead of that before we end up spending more on that carton of milk than we are actually taking in. The milk card with that monthly increase would go from $10 to $11.25. So our fund balance is still healthy, I think we're sitting at about, you know, 100,000, but what we are going to be seeing next year, depending on how things shake out, is with the SNAP fund, and with Medicaid cuts happening, those are the two things that feed into our direct certifications for our families. So depending on what happens with those two programs, we're gonna have families that directly certify for free lunch, which will not be getting that benefit unless they go to pay for applications. So that is something that we'll keep a close eye on, so that we start reaching out to those families, saying, you know, you're not just gonna get that level for, or letter from us saying you're pre-approved, you actually have to go through the application process, and then we, so we can determine, based on income, if you do have a qualification for our free reduced meals.
And I think these prices are still really good.
The meal price, that does include the carton of milk, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Some other districts, major districts, include for their subs, their full day sub, not the half-day sub, that the subs get their meal free. Is that something that we might wanna consider? Not, I don't know what kind of expense that would be for the district, I do know it might help with including subs, I'm not sure this is the place for it, but...
We used to do that.
You used to do that?
And then, I think it got eliminated because it had to be reported as income. It was something with the audit, if I remember right, and I don't know if you were here, Rebecca, or if that was before you, but we had to eliminate it because we would have to include that in their, the meal price in their daily wage, or whatever, and so, you know, they get a free meal, but they're getting taxes taken, yeah. Yeah, it was a while ago, but I just, well, I've been here a while, so.
That, that, nobody was actually paying for it, and that's what the issue, it was a free meal.
We would have to end up billing the district.
Yes.
Because they can't go under Fund 50, and then you get into all those...
I know it was something.
We just need to, yeah, categorize it. It would be, it would need to be categorized under Fund 10.
I'm sure it can, you know, I just, that's why we didn't.
Deb, what was the milk card increase?
It will be, it goes from $10 this year to $11.25 with 45 cents, and it will go up to 40.
And that's for 25 punches?
That's our 45.
Thank you.
So like, there's students who say they bring cold lunch, but then they opt to take a milk from school, like, they're...
They are charged through their lunch account.
Okay.
For the cost of the lunch.
So like, are middle school and high school kids, that's like us, taken off of their lunch, like, they don't have a punch card anymore at that age level, right?
No, nobody has a punch card. Oh, okay. So the punch, what the punch card, what we're talking about, the punch card is, that is for milk break, which happens at, so anything, any milk that is taken, it's just a milk during a meal period, it just goes through their account.
Okay.
Yeah, it just goes through the account.
Do I have a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the 25-26 school meal pricing, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Deb.
Discuss and approve teacher contracts for the 25-26 school year.
So this is just something we do every year. You have a list of, you know, in the board packets, a list of the teachers that we have, so we just en masse renew, approve contracts for next year.
Motion?
Aye.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve teacher contracts for 25-26, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. School board meeting scheduled for 25-26.
So this is the meeting schedule, so it's on the 3rd Wednesday, however, habitually, there's some that do get switched a little bit, so we tried to preempt those. So our annual meeting is on the 4th Monday, which is October 27th, and then, right after that, we'll have a special board meeting to approve the levy on January 26th. That's gonna be a 4th Monday, because that always runs into State Education Convention, and we end up having to do that. November 18th, that's the week of Thanksgiving, or the week of Thanksgiving, so we moved it to Tuesday, so the Wednesday before. And then, we have, April 27th is gonna be on the 4th Monday, because that is spring break, and then, May 19th, the 3rd, Tuesday, because of graduation. So I think we've put them all this year.
The March 25th is on the 4th Monday.
That's spring break.
Oh, that must, I'm sorry, that must be spring break, and then April 27th is the annual meeting for the...
The organization, the elections, right?
Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Discuss and approve the primary school boiler.
So we bid it out to four vendors, and as stated, Tweet and Harkman didn't reply. I did get something back from Harkman today, saying they wouldn't be able to do the job, they'd have to subcontract it out, so it would take too long, but they appreciated us, including them. I'm making the recommendation, and even after talking to Lee, that we are looking at ECND, just based on how well that they know the system, their familiarity with it, even though it was $1,000 more.
Of course, winters will primarily involve the casco, they really weren't involved about two or three years in the primary, were they?
Right, correct.
Knowledge of a system is important.
I'll second, and I agree with Rebecca's saying, they're a pretty key player in our AFS system.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve energy control and design for the primary school boiler repairs, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Discuss and approve the storage area network and the physical server replacements?
All right, yeah, it's nearing about 10 years old, and as stated in the report, it is no longer receiving any updates, so we need to get replacement on that, as well as the aging physical servers, that's two physical servers. He did bid it out, Heartland was extremely high, and then Marco, yep, failed too big, because they said their price would not compete, so maybe that makes sense why Heartland was pretty high as well. And the connecting point was the 64,000. At one point, we asked if we could lease, but found out the lease was like eight grand more, so then, talking with Scott, we have some room in his budget, so I would like to do it where I'd have half of it paid for this year, and then the other half next year, so then, that doesn't allow him to go over. So the recommendation is to go with connecting point, to get that purchased.
Connecting point is our main source that we rely on.
Camera corner. Yep, camera corner, yep, correct.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to go with connecting point? I'll make that motion. Motion's been made, second? Motion's been made and seconded to go with connecting point for the storage area network and server, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, discuss and approve the Stark College Now application? I thought this was really interesting.
What's that?
The different areas.
You know, I think what's happening is more and more students are hearing about TC and GB and all these other things, and they're really starting to look more, is what they are, I think, another thing that's helpful, is our two counselors have a little bit more experience now, as well, so they're knowing how to navigate things more, so even though we still are in this school year, they're holding pseudomemes, ready, and starting a plan for next year, but I really do think a combination of them just knowing more, knowing how to navigate it, as well as students learning more about the programs, is while they're out there, while you're seeing such a difference in classes that they're interested in taking.
I remember the years of just being CNA.
Or specializing in a couple things.
Everybody was taking the CNA part.
Yeah, there's some pretty cool things in here that students are interested in doing.
Yeah. I know one of them that I'm sure is applying for the police part of it, has been riding with county officers already, to get into, thinks it's great. Motion to approve Stark College Now. Second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The Bureau of Personnelis...
Sounds good.
Contract?
So that is Michelle Maxfield, she's our physical therapist for the district. She's been contracting with us for the last seven years to provide physical therapy services. She does a great job, has been very reliable, so I would definitely, I appreciate working with her, and would recommend that we continue to contract for those services.
And they're not easy to find.
Nope.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that question. I didn't look it up. What's the current grade, I seen they're at 77, I thought they were a little over 75, and it's not...
They were a little bit lower, yep, and I have that information here, so she, the last two years, did not have a raise at all, so it did go up by approximately 8% for this year, which is still pretty reasonable, when I looked at other districts that are contracting for services similar to this. So I felt like that was reasonable, so the last time she had an increase was in the 22-23 school year.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 25-26 employee handbook changes?
So there's some proposed employee handbook changes. Some are based upon legal advice, some are based on required notification of district employees of certain policies, and so we put them in the handbook, so that employees have that notification. Some are clarifications and alignments with what we currently do versus our handbook. One of the things, one that has to do with a safety issue, and, you know, just some things, sometimes we have some, we need some clarification, for example, our certified staff, by state statutes, get a half an hour duty-free paid lunch, but that's the only employee group that gets that. Everybody else for lunches is a half hour unpaid lunch. And so, sometimes, we've had, when we're talking with employees, like, well, I get a half hour paid lunch, and they're like, no, you really don't. And so, we cleaned up some of that language in the handbook as well. We also cleaned up some accounting in terms of our fiscal year with comp time, because what we were doing is, we were paying possibly a year's worth of comp time, some of which was earned in one calendar year, into that second calendar year, because we were paying it off at the end of our fiscal year. So we were crossing years, which is not, not good to do. Also, with the reduction in comp time, because we scheduled people to be here to work when kids are here, and when they're needed, and when people are taking, you know, when... And when people are taking, you know, when people are choosing to do comp time versus overtime pay, that means they're not here when we need them to be here. So we still wanted to offer those employees that ability to have comp time. We're just pulling it back a little bit so that, you know, we continue to serve kids the best that we can. Another big thing that is a little bit different that would affect all of our staff is email signatures to ensure uniformity and professionalism, to have a standardized email signature format. And we would work with Scott with that as well and make sure that all new employees that come on board, they understand what that format's going to be.
Question on the first one, annual basis, such as annual advice. Handbook stays the same for the entire school year. That says if changes were to occur, then email with events clearly could be sent out. So I know approved it always on the basis that it's for a full year. But this last thing in blue indicates that a change could be done as long as everyone was known. Obviously, the full board would have to approve a change. But one could then be done, not just at the annual review.
Correct.
Okay, just for clarification. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Summer maintenance hours for tech ed.
So I put in a request for that. Believe it or not, we've been in the building for five years. And for years, we have done summer maintenance with the high school staff. And in order to keep that equipment in the middle school tech ed shop and area, you know, ready to go, you know, I'm making a request for forty summer maintenance hours. I had Meredith kind of give me an estimate of what she did last summer or, you know, thought would be done and what would be appropriate. And so that's the number we came up with, which is certainly less than it is the other buildings or the other building because it's a smaller shop.
I'm going to blow this up a little bit. So I'm sorry because I'm fully taking you off guard because we were talking about this this afternoon. While we had this proposal for additional hours, we started looking at summer maintenance hours historically. And there was two hundred hours allotted for maintenance. And at one time, Ross was the middle school tech ed teacher. And so when the hours got allotted, it got allotted to Ross. And that's what we had been approving for summer maintenance hours. But then when he moved from the middle school to the high school, the hours kind of like followed him, which left a gap in the hours for the middle school. So I talked this afternoon to the tech ed guys. And what we're going to do is we're going to carve those forty hours out of that two hundred that was set last year. And so we'll bring a full proposal next board meeting that won't require additional hours. We're just going to work within the hours that we have.
Well, I'm glad they got back to you because I'd been waiting for them to get back to me.
That's special.
I'm glad they got back to you.
So, yeah. So yes, and I'm sorry, Todd, I apologize to you profusely because we were talking about this this afternoon. And we had gone back historically and looked at what the board had allowed. And we figured out what had happened as to why, because there was middle school hours. It's just they kind of moved with Ross to the high school.
Well, I appreciate that. I was left with the impression that the middle school tech ed equipment hadn't been serviced by any of them since we've been here. So whether it was Dave Gordon or Ross in the years past. So if they're committing to making sure that they're maintaining our equipment, then I can get on board with that.
Yeah, Meredith will still get the forty hours though, so she'll be doing the maintenance. Because then Ross will be doing the high school along with Will and you. But we'll bring that at our next board meeting, so.
Okay. So that action is needed.
Right, correct. And I'm sorry.
Board policy. Starting with letter J.
This new one is, letter J is for Act Twenty. So Act Twenty was the legislation that kind of blew up everybody's reading program. And part of the legislation says we need to have a promotion policy that was, is based in alignment with the Act Twenty. Kyle Faes went through it, then he and I went through it again. So I had some questions and we were talking about how we interpreted. We kind of came to a general understanding of how Act Twenty needs to be enacted and then how the policy mirrors what we're going to be doing. So that, that one is the big one on this.
Question on that one under, I guess, H. Beyond that, we've got A, B, C, and D. The C says that the district would do a promotion. If the district says no, the parents say yes, that means what? We're still promoting them despite the fact that the district recommendation is no?
Could you please repeat where you're reading this from?
Under H. Beyond that, based on the comprehensive evaluation, we're going to follow determinations. And then there's C, says promotion. The district recommends retention with applicable support and service, but the student's parents do not agree with the district's recommendation. So the district, the way I read this is saying, no, we're going to retain. The parent is saying, no, we don't want retained. But the way I read this, we're going to promote them regardless?
There is an extensive body of work that says that retention does not work. So as a district, we would never recommend retention. And we would not, we would try to work with the parents so that if they said, no, we want our child retained, we would present them with the research that says that's a bad idea. And we would try to counsel them into and to not have retention.
Seems, what you just said seems to conflict with what it says here because it says the district recommends retention. And now you're saying the district never recommends retention.
I know, but you're coming in, Dave, that you've read this. I'm trying to figure out even where you are in this. So I just need some time. Remember when we talked about gotchas in meetings that, like, if you have specific questions? So that there's some time to be able to think and be able to respond. And so I'm still looking for that paragraph that you are referencing.
On page five. And I think what it's doing there, Dave, is outlining all the four different options that could happen.
Yes. There are options. And I'm just questioning why we're going to send it.
Okay, you said H. H is a potential long-term versus.
Yeah, I don't know where you.
It's underneath. It's just underneath H.
Yes. I thought you, okay, see, I understood H too, but yeah.
So I'm not somewhere it was going.
Okay. So it's the C under.
Okay, so we, okay, so based on the comprehensive evaluations of the factors above, so we're taking into consideration a lot of data, the district will make one of the following recommendations. And so you're saying that C now?
Yes.
Okay, the district recommends retention with applicable supports and services, but the parents do not agree with the district's recommendation. That is an option, but that's not something that we would recommend. I mean, it's there, it's a possibility. But I don't, in our reading program, we would never recommend.
Are you going to ask a clarifying question, Dave? Are you just recommending if we're not going to recommend it, why would we even have it in there as an option? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's confusing to me at best. When we're going to do a promotion and yet the recommendation is to retain. And so that's why we've got it in policy. I'm looking for clarification.
I think it's trying to honor the parents, right? So the parents there are saying that they don't agree with it. And it's trying to kind of honor that weight of the parents having some voice and say because there's not a body of research to support that retention.
And this process is meant to be, and it's probably not put in policy this way, a collaborative process between the school and the parents and on moving forward? Or how the child moves through the system?
It is saying that we're not going to retain.
Yeah, correct. We're going to, we're going to move on. We're going to, well, both the district says that we don't, that we're going to retain. But we're, but we're still going to promote it regardless. Because the parents want to. So we're never going to deny it just against the, I want to move it fast. That's what this one says.
I disagree with that. The district makes one of the following determinations. C, promotion. The district recommends retention with the applicable supports and services, but the parents disagree. We would then promote.
Correct. So regardless of what the district says, if the parents say they want, no, we will promote. At least that's what we had.
Kind of what the district's policy is anyway.
Yeah, I was going to say, but that is what the law is. That's, yeah. Because the parents have final say.
I mean, that's the district's voice of it. Right, because.
Retention has a very negative impact on learning. Now, there's other districts that are doing it right now down in the south. So it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that data. I wouldn't recommend it there at this point in time, based on the research. Until some new clarifying research comes out. Like, they're retaining third and fourth graders down in Mississippi or Louisiana, one of those two states. It'll be interesting to find out some long-term data. And the other thing is there may be short-term gains for long-term repercussion as well. It just, you know what I mean? Like, how are they do it? How do they end up? They may make gains early on, but then in the end, how does that impact them when they reach high school as well? Because of the social, emotional side of it. There's a.
And there is still an opportunity for retention. Well, Meredith said.
Indeed, right. Because I think, okay, so now that I'm on the same page here. Okay, the district will make one of the following recommendations. And so A is recommend promotion. Promotion to fourth grade with applicable supports and services. Choice B, promotion. The student's non-completion of a personal reading plan was not primarily due to the student's lack of reading proficiency. The third option, C, the determination is promotion, the district recommends. And then D would be retention. So I mean, is there as an option, it would not be one that we would choose under normal circumstances. But that's, that's the way it's said. That those are actually four different determinations, A, B, C, D, that the district could make based on a comprehensive evaluation of factors.
Just seemed, for me, counterintuitive that the district is saying, I understand.
Okay.
Okay. Are we going to go through each one of these or?
I'll make a motion to approve all the policies.
I would make a motion to withhold LMN, Y, K.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, go slow. LMN.
Those three could be possibly in one discussion.
LM and N, Dave?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve?
Do you have any more though?
I have more.
Okay, now can we get, what?
Is Dave the only one that has ones that would like to be separated?
I don't have any.
Okay, let's split all of Dave's and one less that have to be separated, approve them.
Approve the rest without.
Okay, otherwise, I was going to say, let's do JK, then we'll discuss LMN. That way it's easier for keeping track on the sheet.
Okay.
Okay. So I need a motion for J and K.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Robin, second?
I'll second.
By Alex? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, or opposed? Motion carried. Okay, LMN, conflict of interest.
The only question I have are the dollar amounts. And the reason for the question is, in my, in my business, these dollar amounts would be classed as illegal and classed as rebate. I don't know if that's an issue in the district or not. If they change dollar limits or anything that can be given upon a problem, I would just look at this for clarification on that. On one thirty, which would be L, that would come under item F. Is there a God, partly under F? They talk about changing the limits to a hundred dollars on gifts, two hundred dollar limit on entertainment with an annual limit of four hundred. Those same dollar figures appear on all three policies.
They do.
I just don't know if that's true or is an issue. I do know that in my business, that would be illegal. And so I don't know if there's an issue with it or not.
Because of the dollar amount?
Correct, yeah.
Too high?
Yeah.
What happens is though, okay, since Elsie District, no, that's okay. And Elsie District is, we do a lot of business for businesses. I mean, Mike listed off, you know, eight to ten different businesses that we do business with. And so sometimes our employees will get jackets. You know, not that they solicited, not that they asked for, but they're being offered that kind of jacket. We have vendors that send us boxes of cookies at the holiday time that, you know, are more than what they, you know, a twenty-five dollar value. And so we, without being solicited, we sometimes get, because that's the way businesses work, you know. We, they have to, and what I don't want to do is for an employee that accepts something like this, like some partner that they're working with gives them a jacket or gives them, you know, something like that, that, you know, and somebody comes back and says, well, you know, you should never have accepted that or you can't accept that. Where it's actually just, you know, part of, you know, our business partnerships. And we talk about, you know, with the, you know, limit on entertainment, where you go to the state convention and, you know, sometimes you'll go and they'll have dinners, you know, and you'll go to a legal talk or something like that. I mean, what's the cost of that? I don't want somebody coming back and saying, well, because you accepted that, even though we may or may not do business with them, that that would be in violation of policy. So taking that all into consideration, those amounts, we took this off of a different district's policy that broadens it up a little bit. So people don't get in trouble for doing things that they don't think they're getting in trouble for.
Five, you know, we're not getting into trouble by accepting.
Correct.
I'm just looking at the question.
So Dave, this is, I was kind of thinking, so like, we had this exact discussion on policy. So if you would have sent an email, we could have explained this in an email. And we could have been moving along here, correct?
Possibly.
No?
Okay, so Dave, is that a motion then to accept LMN?
No, I think we would have said LMN, O, P, and Q.
Oh. Wait a minute. Okay, a motion's been made to LMN, O, P, Q. By Dave? Second?
I'll second.
Was that a second?
That was a second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So now we are on R.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in. My mistake, I should have gone farther than that.
Okay.
So that was done, all right, then I'll make a motion to approve R, S, T, U, V, and X.
I need to look at sheets.
Through X, you said?
Correct.
Okay.
And it'd be the open enrollment code that I have a question about.
Okay, a motion by Dave to accept all the way up to X.
I'll second.
Second by Dave? All in favor?
By Alex.
Or by Alex, yeah, it's okay. Well, you know, Dave delayed Alex, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Y, open enrollment.
This is probably the one maybe for J more than any else on that one. Under the section, I don't know, full-time open enrollment, annual space determination, item four. I'm not getting.
Yep.
Okay. If the board reserved, yet there's no special space available, what I'm, we do have. I guess I'm just questioning, why do we need to go ahead and have to go through all the rest of the groups that are?
So that's because there's certain spots.
So, that's because there's certain spots, like we're getting pretty closed down, but we do have a few open spots, and I have to go through and review those IEPs to see what's in there. So for example, um, there, I, off the top of my head, I believe we've got two open spots at our primary school for cross-categorical, but we don't have any spots for speech and language, so I have to review that IEP. If they had speech and language, I have to list why they're being denied, and I would say deny a no limit in speech and language. Whereas if I get an IEP that doesn't have speech and language and is just cross-categorical right now, there's two open spots, so we would be able to accept those. So I have to look through each IEP and state the reasons why, which programs it is that we don't have available, if it's the grade level program or the specific service.
Additionally, we have to rank, so it's not just when we do open enrollment, it's not first come, first served. Um, once open enrollment window closes, we assign a number to all of the applications, then we use a random number generator to create a list, and there could be a waiting list, so if a student does leave, there's, there's open enrollment, they leave, they're receiving special ed services, we can offer that seat to another special ed student on the list. So what we have here in green, it is, you know, what we have as far as what our practice was, and so both Gretchen and Terry confirmed that we, this is what we do as well.
I was looking at my, I have.
Okay. So how far can we go from Y through?
Y to double H.
Double H?
Oh, double I, I'm wondering what goes after start, I don't know, can we put them together, what the question was, it can be on that. I have a lot, I just had a question, minor fee on petty cash, fifty dollars, isn't that, is that, I thought that seemed low.
Yeah, we don't really keep any in the office. The only time we've ever had to use it is if we do an overnight package for like, uh, short-term borrowing to get the loan paperwork back in time. But that's the only time we've ever.
Just like a software.
Yeah, we don't use it. And I really just wouldn't wanna get into a habit of people going, oh, how much do you have in there, can I borrow this? And then it's constantly reimbursing people, so trying to avoid that.
I would think the other is.
No, no, correct.
And then if we do, the rest of them is through double J, the question I have is on, actually it's double K.
Double K?
Yeah, student education, technology, successful use of safety. And I think it's in, at least on ours, on the first page. At least the bottom of what we have on that one, and the only thing that I was questioning, users are required to refrain from actions that are illegal, such as libel, slander, vandalism, harassment, theft, plagiarism, goes on, unless, on, upon kind, such as personal attacks, invasion of privacy, injury, etc., et cetera. It goes on, the, I was wondering, couldn't bullying be added within there? Since bullying seems to be a serious element in the district, have you heard about? This, this past full year, quite a bit, and would it be appropriate to have the word bullying inserted, even though most of these other things could be assumed to be bullying? It would be, I think, possibly more directed, and we are concerned, and definitely looking to stop and prevent any bullying.
We would have to look into that, because we do have a separate bullying policy that does address bullying versus technology. So this is, you know, we would have to take a look at that.
I would suggest that be looked into in the future at least.
So is there any with Y, but going how far?
Can, can we continue on in that case?
Sure. So we're starting with Y, I was just gonna, I have, okay.
And now we're working on the next thing I had any questions, Martin, it was on double Y. It was twenty-four sixty program and two which is bulletins. There, it would be green, it would have the green colors or whatever, or halfway on down.
On twenty-four forty?
Uh, twenty-four sixty, twenty-four sixty. Program for students with disabilities. Have one there, with the green, the DPI Special Education Model Forms and Policies and Procedures Manual, shall be adopted and delivered by the board. But shouldn't that be checked? Shouldn't we be saying that we would be doing that?
But we did, yeah, yeah, we did, it's just that there's no.
Yeah, it's just what it's doing is rather than just saying such handbook, it's specifying the handbook that we use.
Yeah, but it wasn't.
It's just, it's gonna be its own paragraph.
Correct, but then it's got the box, as in, whenever we accept it, it would be marked as, as that we're doing that.
So there'll be no box, it'll just be a paragraph?
Right, yes.
Either that or, or X, one way or another.
I can, we can, we can make that change, Dave.
Going on down to fifty-five forty, which is triple E, if it's looking at the letters. Uh, first page. Law enforcement personnel, I don't trust the school authorities. Concern I have is the beginning of the third line of that, that sentence, uh, that administrator made, and on and on enforcement, allegations of crime committed in school building or on school grounds during school hours. There are things that happen after school hours, after-school activities and events.
Okay, you're gonna have to tell me what paragraph you're talking about there.
Okay, the. Policy is fifty.
You're on the first page, right?
Yes.
Okay, oh, so you're on A one?
Yes, yes.
No, I got it, I just don't know where you have.
I'm trying to. Question the, the during school hours part, because there are things that take place in after-school activities. And to me, it should be, we should be able to do it anytime, not just during school hours, because it's on school grounds, we should be able to do it.
I mean, does school hours mean our, in business hours, does school hours mean any kind of a school sanctioned activity? I mean, a baseball game is technically still school hours because of school monster?
I think you, you eliminate during school hours as well as sanctioned by school. On grounds.
I'm not sure about that, Dave.
Yeah.
Because what happens if something happens on school grounds and nobody's here at the middle of the night? It's not a school issue, and this is giving the administrator the ability to remain a primary investigator with assistance of law enforcement. He don't want anything to do with it, it's none of our business.
Well, I disagree with that, but it is our business that takes place on our property, on our grounds.
And it'll be handled by law enforcement, but not the school. Let's say somebody gets mugged on school property outside of school hours, that's not something they're gonna investigate, that's gonna be something that law enforcement's gonna be able to. I mean, this gives the administrator the ability to be active in primary in the investigation for something that's our business that happened during our hours, but we don't wanna have that role for something that was not our business, not during our hours.
Right.
If somebody gets mugged on a football field at three AM, that has absolutely nothing to do with school.
But if someone gets mugged when they're here as a spectator or whatever, that's, after-school activities are school activities, it's on school grounds, it's not on a school hope. That doesn't take place every day, but whatever.
So maybe there's some clarification there, is, is this school activity considered school hours? Cause I understand what you're saying there, but still I think it should be limited to.
But during school activities, I feel like the coaches, advisors, athletic director, like those people will step in to assist with student-related needs, if it's applicable, and I think that's what our corporate handbook essentially covers, is that, that's that kind of due process and protection.
I guess what you're, you're saying is, during school hours, does that cover extracurricular activities?
What it does say.
And I agree that it should be, right, if it's a school event, then we should have the ability to play a primary role in that. But I don't think that we should be opened up to that twenty-four seven, three sixty five. Is what that technically means, that you would have to get it at three AM?
Oh, yeah, that's what happened.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be my concern.
Right, 'cause I mean, this is, it, the title is by law, so different procedures are to be followed, and each instance is outlined below. By law enforcement personnel on, on request of school authorities. So we would be asking law enforcement personnel, okay, so we're gonna be asking during school hours. Even sometimes when we know that, like, something happened at a Friday football game, you know, I mean, depending on the severity, we're, we're dealing with it on Monday, you know, during regular school hours. You know, obviously, if it's an emergency, we're, we're dealing with it, with it that night, but if it waits, it, it waits till the next day. You know, we don't deal with it, you know, at three in the morning.
In a way, it'd be the same thing for a bus, right? We have numerous bus incidents that happen on the way home. I'm not coming back to school at five o'clock when I get a parent phone call, I'm waiting till the next morning, to Joelle's point, to manage it, unless it's something so threatening, which then I am calling Kiwanee County to give them a heads-up to do welfare check or whatever it might be.
That's good example.
Yeah. Have my hand in that pot a lot, so.
Next.
Triple G. Actually, it's eighty-three thousand five hundred records. And again, I'm looking for clarification on, on page two. There's a very lot, series of things in that, checked off.
Yes, and I can go through and I can check those, cause that is what we do. We do do, our current policy has all of those.
So we would be, actually would be.
We currently have them, though, those, those are not changes. The change is just removing the expiration date of the individual schedules, but all the rest we already have in policy.
Yeah, the other part on it is that seven-year record retention, does that include board meeting minutes? Because of my understanding, by law, they're totally maintain the evidence.
They are, those are. So it says, in the event that the preceding general record schedules adopt, do not define the retention period. The retention period is seven years. For board meetings, it's already defined in those schedules.
Last one, ninety-seven hundred relations with special interest groups under section E, prizes, vouchers, slash other rewards. We had this discussion on the previous policy on it, where there is this section, uh, in parentheses, including gender status, changes of sex or gender identity that will be moved from the previous policies. I see it popping up in here again, uh, we have that line struck, same as it was in others.
We can strike that? It doesn't, it doesn't change.
That don't follow the law then.
That's, that's not an accurate statement, but we can strike it out.
That's the last one I have.
Okay, so is this Y through triple K?
Yep. Okay, motions were made to accept Y through triple K. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I hear a second? Robin?
Yeah.
Motions were made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Information items, anything, nothing? Consider possible motion to adjourn to closed session?
I'll make.
Motion by Alex, second, second by Jenny, all in favor?
I'm opposed, motion carried.